Thursday, June the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. So we'll have a ribbon cutting at four thirty on the twenty-fifth. You can come through and kind of see the building and then hopefully you'll stay and see the board commissioners in action at six o'clock. We're going to continue live streaming all meetings. After we move to the new administrative building, all participation will be in person at that time. Another reminder on homestead exemptions, you get a chance to vote coming up in the first of next year. There'll be ten ballot questions and all ten ballot questions must pass. Summary of what we're trying to do is at age sixty-five, you will get an automatic value freeze on your property. We'll move the general homestead from two thousand per household, this is for everybody, to five thousand. And then in year twenty thirty-five, that five thousand will move to ten thousand. Also, automatically at age seventy-five, you'll get an additional ten thousand dollars homestead added to your home state of the back. All the current exceptions that we have will sunset if everything passes. Also, the Mark Park master plans. Currently, the comments we received from town halls and input is being reviewed. And we expect final draft adoption sometime in the third quarter of this year. Do you do that? So our mission and visions, our mission is to have engaged community world-class schools, thriving commercial sectors, vibrant town centers, and high-quality development. Also, our vision is to provide the highest quality services in a physically responsible manner, promote the health, safety, general welfare, welfare of all citizens. So budget, a little bit about how we do the budget process. The budget process starts in January. Departments and constitutional officers submit their budgets, receives an administrative review, and the recommendations are made based on what they submitted. We rely heavily on our strategic plan that was adopted by the board commissioners and making the recommendations. Then we have meetings with departments and constitutional officers like to sit down and go through the recommendations. The budget then goes to the board commissioners for review questions and input. And then we have a public presentation of the budget. And we also receive for so the statistics and review asked questions and provide input as well. And then we moved to budget adoption, which we did on June sixth of this, this year. Total budget is seventy-five million dollars. General fund is thirty-eight, that's your general government services. That's covered by our tax rate and local option sales tax as well as our millage rate. Splosh seven point one million and T splosh ten point five million as well as special funds, S D nine-one-one, and also grants that come in. And then we have a capital fund that we're putting money in for projects that need to be done. So three hundred and eighty thousand will be spent out of that as of right now for the next budget cycle. And then our enterprise funds includes water resources, civic center, and sanitation will be sixteen point eight million. Law enforcement is eleven million dollars. Keeping people safe is a top priority for government, a lot of money and time and efforts focused in this area. Just want to thank the sheriff's office for great communication and cooperation. They're working to help, help us with phase replacements, also long-term planning about what their, their needs are so we can prepare for that. This includes jail patrol investigations, E nine-one-one, and also court services. We've added one new employee in law and for and sheriff's office in F Y twenty-three. We'll be adding four employees for F Y twenty-four. Two of those will be road deputies and two are going to the E nine-one-one center to answer call. Public works, four and a half million dollars coming out of general fund from your property taxes, two million from splosh and nine million from T splosh. Just want to say again, thank you so much for approving the T splosh. That's, that's a huge deal for O'Conne County. As you can see, we'll be paving a lot more roads than we have ever done in the past. Also, as promised, we'll be dropping the meal rate by one meal for this next year. So your property tax assessments that you did get have the old rate on it. It did not reflect the one meal drop that will occur sometime in September will be our setting date for that. Parks and Rec, three point nine million, this is for park and program operations, covering employees, equipment, and supplies. As, as most of y'all know, there's high demand for all areas of our park and all different user groups. So it takes a good bit of money and time and effort to, to keep that flow. Judicial is two point seven million. This includes the courts and a district attorney. And last year, we also provided a new employee for the clerk's off, clerk report's office to help with their caseload. Public safety includes fire rescue and animal services. If you're looking for some voluntary opportunities, there they are right there, fire service as well as animal services and always looking for some help. You take public safety courts and the sheriff's office, forty percent of our entire budget goes to keeping people and property safe. The fire department is also supported heavily from and in animal services well heavily from splosh to buy equipment as well as buildings. Historical seating facilities, this is from the two thousand fifteen splosh. This is our last section that's left from two thousand fifteen is two hundred and two thousand. That's some of that's in process now, but we do expect to finish using that money in F Y twenty-four, which was just adopted. So majority that is going to be for all that's going to be spent on the William Daniel House as well as the Eagle Tavern. Now there's time for the Eagle Tavern to be painted again. We also have some structural work that needs to be done on the chimney there. And it gets kind of expensive trying to keep that historical look. Visitor Bureau Bureau has agreed to go into the William Daniel House. Previously, that was used by the sheriff's office for sexual assault victims to go in. It wasn't quite. It wasn't the right fit for that type of work. So Bogart fortunately was able to donate a space to the sheriff's off to, to the same group for that. So that was moved out there earlier this year. So the Daniel House was basically sitting empty and as you know, it's not good for a house to sit there empty. So we were looking at different options and approached the visitor's bureau about going in. They're very excited about moving there. They do get requests to tour the thing, which wasn't available when the sheriff's office was using it. So we're, we're very excited they'll be moving in. So there's some work that's got to be done to bring that up to par and that, that'll be the usage of that splosh money. And then water resources, wood winning departments recognized for meeting industry standards for capacity management, operation, and maintenance. It receives no general fund support, so none of your property taxes go to fund the water resources. This is self-sustaining. Splosh funding is available for capital projects for putting in some water lines and helping with sewer. Other than that, they receive no support from your tax dollars. That'll conclude it. Everybody wants to come up here and join me on the hot seat. All right, with that, we're going to turn the meeting over to you. If you would, just come to the microphone and state who you are and where you're from and we'd like to hear what you got to say.
Hey, I'm Jeff Hood. I live on Julian Court, which is Deerbrook here in O'Conie County. And John, you had mentioned at the state of the county back in March that the Georgia Department of Transportation was having second thoughts on what to do with Julian Drive in regards to upgrades of three sixteen. And I went to the open house they had in Bogart about three weeks ago. And they said, that is correct. They aren't sure what they're going to do with Julian Drive. They said that the options they're considering are to build a flyover bridge or have right in, right out only on both sides, which we kind of currently have. But then take away our median access to shoot across or turn left. And then the other option to me that they mentioned that's kind of troubling is that they would completely block off our access to three sixteen. And so in talking to a lot of neighbors in Deerbrook, and I know you guys don't make the decision, but you may have some influence with the Georgia Department of Transportation. Everybody I've talked to is adamantly opposed to them completely blocking off us having access. And it's not just, we would lose convenience, but we would be full-time going through Silverleaf, which is kind of unfair to them. But then it also could be critical if there's some kind of emergency and we couldn't get ambulance or law enforcement quickly into our neighborhood. So for what it's worth, I want to go on record saying I'm a fiscal conservative. So it probably does not make sense to put a multimillion dollar bridge up. But at a minimum, keep, we would like to keep the right in, right out if possible. And then a question I have, John, I know you talked about the T splosh. But since Costco has been open now for several months, what are we seeing in regards to the activity with the sales tax or T splosh or whatever? The volume, is it too early to tell or is there anything you can share with us from Costco?
Yeah, not on Costco specifically. I will say we had a record number for the last couple of months in our, unfortunately, I can't recall what that number was. If anybody remembers it, but definitely our, our sales tax numbers are up since Costco was open. I don't know how much of all that is applied to them. Also, there was a bill passing the general assembly this year that starting in January, there's something on software subscriptions that will now be taxable. Some of the information that came during that bill's debate was there'd be about thirty million dollars additional revenue to the state and local governments from that taxing of the software.
Hi, I'm Pam Hendricks. I live at eleven fifty-one Thornwood Drive. And there's a big fancy government annex building being built up on the bypass. And I was just wondering, how much is that costing us, the taxpayers?
Yeah, all this was talked about when we did the, the splosh. And so the building is fourteen point eight million. It's coming in, it'll come in under budget. It's forty-four thousand square feet. We've been moving all our county offices into that as well as the tax commissioner and environmental health. There will be plenty of room for expansion over the, the next, I say fifty years, but it could go longer. So we've been very, if you go back and look at the number of employees in O'Conie County, it's consistently dropped over the last six years. The only place we're adding people is in the constitutional offices, so sheriff's office, clerk of court, and tax commissioner, all have received additional, additional staffing. Any new positions we have are, are where we retire another position and move it around. So there's been no growth in the, in the general fund or in the governor and authority employee count over the last six years. So we feel pretty solid with the size of the building and what it's going to look like. I don't know if I agree with your fancy word, but it's, it's a nice building. It's a practical building. It was very well done through the architecture and, and the people building it. So it'll be something O'Conie County can be proud of.
Allen Aiston, we live on Highland Parkway, just inside the Barrow County line. Property taxes, I know you talked about it, but so in the five, past five years, ours have increased by sixty percent, which seems excessive. And I know the COVID caused a lot of housing prices to increase, but in my opinion, it's like whatever source they use, you know, it is not real. You know, it may say your house is worth a million dollars, but in reality, you're not going to get a million. But anyway, other counties, you know, when you get sixty-five, they drop the educational portion, which is, would be a huge help. And, and the thing that you talked about earlier, I mean, it's good to hear that something is happening. Honestly, I don't understand, like, what does that mean for me type of thing? So I wonder if you could explain that a little bit more or if there's a place I can go and get some more information.
So if you, if you're sixty-five or older now, you can go to the tax commissioner and have your property values frozen. So that means whatever your value is, when you freeze it, that will remain it as long as you're qualified under that.
We did that.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we didn't know about it till this year.
And that's one reason we're trying to make the change that we're making. We're trying to make that automatic. So the tax commissioner now has the ability to track your birth date. She's collecting that information. So automatically when you or your spouse turns sixty-five, you'll get that freeze. That's one of the flaws in the system that we had is if you didn't know about it, you couldn't take advantage of it. So that hopefully that makes that easier. In addition, so you'll get an increase in your homestead exemption from two thousand all the way up to five. And then when you hit seventy-five automatically, that will increase by ten thousand on top of the, the five that we are going to. So that, that will be a substantial relief and I don't know. I believe you're talking about your values going up sixty percent.
Our property tax.
Property tax.
Fifty-two hundred when we moved in and it was eight thou, over eight thousand this year.
Yeah. So the assessment notice you got was not correct. So that's one thing to keep in mind. It doesn't have the right tax rate on it. Also, if you had already filed for your freeze, that may not be reflected in that notice because those original notices, there was an error on that send out. I will say we've reduced millage rate for the last three years. We didn't do a full rollback. Last year, we did a complete rollback, which means your property tax for, for the county portion should have been about the same. And then we're also dropping one meal, which was not reflected on your assessment notice. So what you could probably call down to the tax assessor and give him a rerun that for you and let you look at what that number is.
So I apologize for not knowing this, but when you say exemption goes from two thousand to five thousand, what does that mean, five thousand?
So, so every homeowner receives a two thousand dollar reduction in their value automatically off the top. So that automatic reduction will be go from two thousand to five.
So off the value of.
Off the value before it's taxed, yes.
Okay. And, and where can I find out more information about what's, what's in works to be voted on next year? Is there any document or anything?
There should be some stuff on our website. Do we have anything on there? We'll get some, I'll get something to you. You sign in for us. Yeah, we got this little, this is about current one. It's not about the new ones there, right? Yeah. It's not about the ones we're trying to do. Did you sign in for us?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll get in touch with you and I'll give you a call and we can kind of go through that and okay, help you with that.
I appreciate it. We had a HOA meeting last night and there was several of us in our age group that were expressing concerns like that. So I appreciate it.
Jeff Hood again. So a follow-up to that gentleman's question, John, your response, if you're sixty-five or older, your vow, I guess, assessment would freeze. What if we have a housing bubble and the market kind of drops and the assessments drop? Would, if it's frozen, would it drop or?
Yes, my understanding is you get to have your cake and eat it too. So it will drop, but when it starts going back up, it will go back up to that frozen rate when that occurs.
Okay. And then to kind of piggyback off that gentleman's question and your response about taxes, the general assembly and the governor announced that we will get one-time property tax relief. And I think it could vary from maybe three hundred to five hundred dollars. I've kind of heard the range. So can you kind of tell us what you know about that?
Yeah, so you'll get an eighteen thousand dollar homestead exemption from the governor and general assembly this year. So you'll have a separate line item below our three, two thousand dollar one that says from the governor and general assembly, eighteen thousand. So based on our tax rate, including the school system, I'll probably three to three fifty. I hadn't calculated it. With our reduction, it's probably going to be a little bit less, but it's, you get eighteen thousand dollars off your value. And then you take that times the tax rate and that's how, what dollar amount it equals for you.
And then one other question regarding, I guess, road construction. What's the status of the traffic lights, Union Church Road? I don't guess they're up, but what's kind of the timetable for it right up the street here? And then when will we see, what will be the next proposed cold, I mean, roundabout that we're going to see dirt being moved? Thank you.
Yep. So the, we're just waiting on delivery of the equipment. We have awarded the contract for install. I made a. We have awarded the contract for install. I made a, I misstated that last time we had a meeting. We were getting ready to sign it, but we have a contractor on board ready to go. As soon as the equipment gets here, they'll start installing. We're hopeful that'll happen this summer prior to school opening, but there's no guarantees with this delivery schedule or lack of a delivery schedule that we have. The number one roundabout for, for local will be Snow's Mill at Lane Creek. That's currently in design. So hopefully we'll be able to go to bid to that either fall or spring and next, fall this year or spring of next year, just depending on how quickly the design gets done. But that's underway.
Pam Hendricks again. I don't know if y'all have heard, but there's some controversy this summer about our O'Conne County library and the children's summer reading program, which I have to tell you, I, I was living in Morgan County when my children were young, but that was just one of the greatest programs. I did it with my children from probably about age three to seven or eight or nine. And they kind of thought they were too old for it, but it was a great program. Well, this summer, our local library, because it's falling in June, which is the pride month, all there are many of their read books, they're reading these young children. I mean, I, I'm talking babies to nine or 10 are all related to pride month. And I just think that's age inappropriate. I just think we are destroying the innocence of our children. And I want to know if y'all are aware of that. I've seen several letters that I think you've gotten about it. And I want to know how much is the county, you know, what, how much are we funding the library? And, you know, is there anything that, are y'all going to get involved in that? I have talked to the library director. I think his name is James Mitchum. He promises me that this will be different next year. But anyway, it's, it's a interesting thing that's just popped up this year. Can you speak to that?
So we provide over $600,000 in funding to the libraries. That includes Watkinsville and Bogart. We are not involved in the day-to-day operations. We have received those, some of the communications you're talking about. We are aware of the controversy that's popped up and it's very unfortunate that that's the position that we're in. We have no mechanism of stopping a program or making a program from, from the board commissioner's seat. I have had a lot of conversations with the chairman of the library board. He's, he's keenly aware of what's going on as well. I think part of the problem is the programming is decided at the library branch level. So like Bogart's not doing this, Watkinsville is. There's I think four or five others in the regional system that are doing something similar that's created similar controversies for their locations. So the library board is not actually approving what's happening there. And I don't believe that senior management of the regional system is either. So some of the things that we've talked about with the library board chairman is going to a program where they review the programming for, for that, for that particular library. And they will approve that in their quarterly meetings or advise on it, whatever their role is. So we think we have a good path forward to try to help everybody understand what the values are in O'Conne County. And really, we just don't want the library to be a point of controversy. It's always been an organization where the entire community was behind them. We were able to fund them, help with SPOLOST. And these kinds of controversies are not good for them. So.
So the widening of Highway 441 in Morgan County continues or making progress. So what is the timetable when we may see the widening begin when it creeps into O'Conne County?
So they're working on right of way now. They've placed a lot of stakes along 441. They're in negotiations for property along that pathway. So that widening will occur from the, from the bridge at the Morgan County line to the city, to Assendale Road, and that's where it'll stop. So we're hoping sometime in 2025, you'll start seeing, or at least that going to be at award construction. So that's all we kind of really know now. They're getting the, they've got the plans pretty much laid out. They're trying to acquire the right of way.
That makes me think of something else. Pam Hendricks again. I'm currently the reject of the Reverend John Andrew chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution. And we are very concerned. Our patriot is buried out there on 441, right at the Michael Farm. And those stakes look like they're taking out his gravesite. And that's very concerning to our chapter. It looks like, you know, they could swing it the other way. Any reasoning why they're, you know, choosing to take out a revolutionary war patriot grave?
Well, the plans I've seen show no grave relocations. So those stakes don't necessarily mean the road's going to that point. It doesn't even mean that's part of the right of way. It may be in construction easement where they have to get on that person's property to, to do something. It may be a driveway easement that's needed. So you can't just go by the stakes. The owner of that property will be approached by a acquisition person from the State Department of Transportation. And they'll explain what all that means, but I didn't, I didn't see anything on the plans that showed relocation of a grave. You can also, there is a website that GDOT has. We'll try to get that on the website as well that has the 441. It has all the plans from where they're widening and in Morgan County, all the way up to Assendale Road and Bishop. And you can, you can hone in and kind of see where they expect things to flow, but I don't anticipate a grave being moved.
Here, I live on Lynnre Road. I just had a couple of questions about roads and the 316 meeting. Jeff must be one of the only people that I know of that got anything out of it. Commissioner Horton was there and I didn't get a whole lot out of it. And then later I saw a couple of people that were in attendance and I asked him, I said, did you get much out of that meeting? And they said, not really. And anyway, I guess there's some information on the DOT's website. And I, I tried to look at it and it was almost overwhelming. I mean, it had everything from soil borns to bridge plans to, I mean, you know, pages and pages and pages. Is there a set of plans anywhere that locally you can look at that, that anybody has?
So now the website you need to go to is Transforming 316. That has it broke down by county and then each intersection is listed or each project number. So I'm not really sure of the purpose of that meeting either. I think they're kind of got a new approach, sort of like Jeff mentioned. They're wanting to do some right ends, right outs, some dead ends and things like that along some of these less traveled roads. And if you go look at the survey that they're trying to get you to take, it asks questions that are kind of leading toward that. So I just think they're trying to get input on in general versus site specific. So, but there'll be more, just like when we did Roger Langford and Jimmy Daniel and O'Conne Connector. There'll be more specified town halls, all those were virtual, but those will occur once they get further down the plan. When they have a draft that they feel comfortable, they'll bring that to the public for, for comment. Similar to what they did at Dials Mill. And so based on those comments, that's kind of why they've gone back to the drawing board and that's showing is reconsidering that location because of the input they received. So.
Next was a roundabout at Ray's Church and Malcolm Bridge.
So we're getting closer. They're in the, waiting for final approval on the right of way plans. Once those are approved, well, those will be turned over to a consultant with, that has the federal trend. There's certain processes you have to follow for federal dollars. And they'll start negotiating for those parcels that we need in order to do it. As soon as right of ways acquired, we'll move into the bids to start construction. So you're probably talking, it could be as long as two years before construction starts. Hopefully we can secure a right of way a lot quicker than that.
And then you know anything about the, I guess it's the O'Conne Connector Phase two from Butler's Crossing down to the Watkinsville Bypass? I was through there today and I saw like three people working on the whole project. So I mean, that rate is going to be a while.
Yes, it's going to be a, a long-term project. I'm not sure. We, the big slowdown was getting piped for relocation of the water line. That put us like three months behind. So I don't know what the latest delay is, or they're just maybe trying to get their crews remobilized to come back. You noticed the roundabout in front of the administrative building went very, very quickly. So that worked out good there.
It looked like they were doing some utility work up in the old high school parking lot across from the golden pantry.
And it may be the water line's still not quite ready to start moving. And then I think there's one telecom that still has some old poles hanging up.
Thank you.
So next year's general assembly gets about six and a half months away. I'm just curious, have any of you gentlemen had much dialogue lately with Houston Marcus or Senator Coward about what may be brewing in next year's general assembly? Maybe something that didn't quite get across the finish line this year that could next year? And just kind of any of you that want to speak on it, what would you like to see passed in next year's general assembly that could benefit our county here?
So, so we do all talk throughout the year, even when the legislature is not in session. And a lot of times they're just as surprised as we are at some of the stuff that pops up. I know our association will start in August formulating a policy committee report that shows stuff that will be beneficial to counties if we could get it passed. Really, our number one hope is they just don't pass anything that's going to interfere with our strategic planning and comprehensive plan. That's most of the time it's spent, most conversations are about stopping something that's coming through more than trying to get something done.
What about Bishop Farms Parkway? Do we know when that road is going to go from the college back to the aquatic center? Is that scheduled yet?
No, that's currently on the shelf. When we went to bid for that project, we had, we had a million and a half set aside. GDOT was going to put in 600,000. So we were about at 2.1. When the bids came in, it was like three and a half million. So we put that one on the shelf. There's a, because of that creek crossing there, it gets very expensive. There's some very big culverts that have to be built. A lot of that was based on University of North Georgia wanting to expand there as well. So there may be some other options that pop up in the future, but right now there's no scheduled date for moving forward.
Just for clarification, when is the next town hall? You mentioned John something in the new administrative office in July. Was that a town hall or?
No, I don't recall the day of the next town hall, but it will be at the new building when we do have it. It's on, it's on the website.
So in about three months?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm Jean Barzanti on Oliver Bridge Road and at the last, after the last town hall, I'm with the Parks Foundation Board. Several of you gave donations and that was meant a lot to the board. So thank you very much.
So just in August 22nd will be the next town hall meeting at the new administrative building, August the 22nd. Any raised hands virtually? Broadband project is, is underway. We're getting a lot of good, good feedback from that. We're already, they're already hooking customers up. There are still a few areas that we're talking with Charter about. So if you hadn't got yours yet, don't panic. If you want to send us, send me an email and just tell me where your address is, if you've got concerns and we'll definitely take a look at it. But that's been a really good project so far and I know there's some customers that are hooked up that were using satellites. So their, their whole world has changed drastically there. We sure appreciate everybody's time. We'll be hanging around a few minutes. If you, if your microphone's shy, you can come up and ask us a question if you like. We do appreciate everybody taking time to come out. Again, thank you so much for T SPOLOST. We think that's going to be a game changer. And we'll be setting the millage rate sometime in September. We're waiting on the final digest to be presented by the tax commissioner. And with that, we are adjourned.